City Attorney, report out.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. The council was briefed on Item B. No reportable action was taken. The council is discussing and will continue to discuss Item A. The council has tabled that for now. The special meeting will not adjourn right now, but instead will take a brief hiatus or tabling while the regular meeting continues, or while the regular meeting starts. And at the end of the regular meeting, the council will go back into closed session on Item A. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call to order the City Council meeting for February the 4th, 2020. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist? Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Potem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Fish?
Here. We are going to start off with Mr. Jerry Jambezian, owner of Wonder Cleaners, who will be leading us in the invocation. If everyone will please stand. Afterwards, remain standing. Our pledge of allegiance will be led by Mr. Frank Riddell.
Thank you, Mayor Fish. Let's bow in prayer, please. Our gracious heavenly Father, again, Lord, we come before you asking for your guidance and direction for this council and the decisions that they will make tonight. It takes many moving pieces to make this city run in the most efficient manner. We have dedicated city employees and volunteers that make us a city to be proud of. We also thank you for our dedicated sheriffs who have helped make Temple Station Crime Statistics the lowest in all of Los Angeles County. They have helped make us the 41st safest city in California. Our citizens have had a part in this downturn through Neighborhood Watch and neighbors looking out for each other. So, Father, thank you for this evening. We commit this evening to you and all that you're going to do. In your name we pray. Amen.
Luke, to those who have already heard you absolutely well, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item five, ceremonial matters. We have Mr. Peter Choi from the Temple City Chamber of Commerce, who will be giving us the chamber activities update.
Thank you, Mayor Fish, City Council, Temple City staff and Temple Cityans. I'm Peter Choi with the Chamber's Quarterly Report. Again, we want to thank Representative Judy Chu, our Mayor Potem Tom Chavez, Councilmembers Vincent Yu and Cynthia Sternquist to help celebrate our November 8th grand opening of our new office next door. Working out fantastic. And you've all seen the office now, and it's just working great. I will just add a personal note that what's really lovely is it got a little lonely on the other side of town at 9050 Las Tunas. And one of the great things is, you know, really getting to know Brian Arizumi and Ariel and seeing city staff, even ones that we have not engaged with. So, that's been a great thing. And we welcome more engagement, both professional and personal. It's, we're less lonely here. So, that's, thank you very much. We, of course, published our Temple City Life to inform the public and stimulate discussion. In the last quarter, city-related articles included the All Ages Bike Expo Relay for Life, the TCU SD Citizens Oversight Committee Applications, Temple City Coalition for the Homeless, CalFresh Food Benefits for Seniors with Disabilities, and on and on. And we look forward to continuing this and again invite everyone and anyone with any news of interest to Temple City or about Temple City to simply submit it to the chamber by the 20th of each month. We, we mentioned, I mentioned this the last time, but of course it has happened. And then October 23rd, we had our annual, Ninth Annual Awards Gala. Thank you to Mayor Nanette Fish, Councilmembers Cynthia Sternquist and William Mann, LA County Supervisor Catherine Barger, Assemblymember Ed Chow, many other dignities, dignitaries and community leaders. And I mention it again simply so I can highlight again our honorees who really exemplify what makes Temple City great. Sircon Aranay, outstanding professional, an architect and contractor. Park Lane Dental, the nation's first Hello Kitty dental clinic right here on Las Tunas. Jing Lee of Wushu Action Star Academy. And of course, our community leaders, TransTech Engineers and California American Water. It was a great evening. We enjoy the fact that we do it in a local restaurant. This year it was the dive. We thank Johnny Nguyen very much for closing this restaurant for us. And we look forward to finding a new venue for 2020. We partnered with the Asian Pacific Islander Small Business Program to present the 20th Annual Asian Small Business Expo with the theme of sustaining your business in a strong economy. And of course, we engaged in our usual promotion for local businesses' opening. We had three grand openings. We partnered with the San Gabriel Chamber and Rosemead Chamber to host a grand opening for Your Home Soul Guaranteed Realty. On November 15th, we hosted a grand opening celebration right here in Temple City for Mary and Martha's Home for the Elderly. And December 13th, Mayor Fish and Representative Judy Chu were joined by council members and local dignitaries for the grand opening of Planet Fitness in Temple City. I know that there are some in here who have already started working out there. I'll be joining with you on March 1st, after I come back from my vacation. So, it's fantastic. It's fantastic to have a gym. Number one thing about a gym, you've got to be able to get there. It has to be easy to get to the gym. And that's what's so great. And we, I can really foresee that it might become quite a community center because nothing breaks barriers than chatting with people while they're sweating on the stairmaster next to you. And it's such a great facility. So, thanks to all who came to help that. And of course, recently in January, we had the grand opening for Somi Somi Ice Cream. Technically, that's the first quarter of, but I just wanted to promote Somi Somi in Camellia Square to anyone listening. It's an amazing Korean-inspired ice cream, very popular. They bake their fish-shaped ice cream cones on site. And so, again, we thank Councilmembers Sternquist and Mann for attending, as well as everyone else. Our city manager, Brian Cook, taking time out from his busy schedule. And again, promoting these businesses, giving the best chance. As they say, in life and in business, you have one chance to make a first, a good first impression. And that's really what the grand openings are about, is to present it to the community in the best light and give them the best chance of succeeding and, of course, bringing sales tax revenue into the city treasury.
So, Peter?
Yes.
Can I interrupt you for a minute?
Absolutely.
So, after a month of going to Planet Fitness almost every day, missing just a couple of days, I treated myself yesterday to a Planet Fitness workout. Fried chicken with fries at Blazing Chick, which is amazing. And then I had half an ice cream from Somi Somi. So, it's, it's a great place to go and, and try out, so.
And I will say for those who have greater discipline than our council member, you know, you can always go to Kang Hul Dong Bek Jong Karim BBQ for a keto diet and, and then go to Planet Fitness and then cheat with Somi Somi later. We did two networking events with the Rosemead Chamber of Commerce, two happy hour networking mixers at the Dive Restaurant. And coming up on February 12th, we are partnering with the West San Gabriel Valley Realtors for a five-city mega mixer from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on February 12th. It's an opportunity, it's free to chamber members and realty members, but it's a chance to meet your local elected officials and candidates running on the local level. So, it's not state senate or assembly or U.S. senate, but it's local city council, local races, local school boards, an opportunity to meet those individuals. I will note that, before I just finish this next page, I will note that it has come to my attention that because we just did a recent, two recent events in the past week, and we were talking about attendance, and it's come to my attendance that, my attention that due to the coronavirus outbreak in China, many of our community members, both business and residential, seem to be avoiding large gatherings just out of an abundance of precaution, one thing. And, and so, I think we may be seeing this in community events or our chamber mixer events where the turnout may be lower. And hopefully, the, the responsible authorities will get a handle on the coronavirus. But certainly because of our large Asian-American population, I would just like to note that I was at an event, which I shall not name, and I was met by someone who I shall not name. And the first thing they said to me, I think in jest, was, "Where's your mask?" And my response is, "Why do you ask that to the only Asian person in this room?" And I know why. And I just want to caution the public that even though this virus has originated in the Wuhan province of China, and that is where it is strongly located, we must realize that it can be spread by anyone and not just folks with faces like mine. And the best thing that you can do is really to wash your hands. Wash your hands. The masks may be of limited use. There's whole, there's a lot of articles out there. But really, the note from the chamber to our members and to the community is simply to advise that you wash your hands. You're advised to sing "Happy Birthday" to yourself while you wash your hands, and that's a sufficient amount of time. But wash it every chance you get. You're more in danger with an actual flu virus than you are from the coronavirus right now. But it's understandably the fear of the unknown, not knowing what the treatment is. And so, pardon my digression, but we just wanted to get that message out. In the last quarter, we welcomed four new members, Jeffrey Lee, Planet Fitness, GMAC Finance Group, and ABCO International Freight. In terms of local leadership, we continued to support events and activities by non-business community groups. We supported and promoted the Temple City Relay for Life. We supported local churches and preschools on their Second Annual Trunk and Treat Halloween Festival. On October 31st, we donated raffle prizes to the Historical Society's Annual Gala Dinner. We also donated raffle prizes to the Women's Club of Temple City. We supported and promoted the City of Temple City's Toy Drive. And then we collected and donated toys for the LA County Fire's Spark of Love Toys for Kids program. Of course, I attended the monthly Valley Association of Chamber executive meetings in Urbandale, Duarte and Arcadia, October, November, December respectively. Temple City will be hosting VACI in September of this year. And that is our report for this fourth quarter of the past year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And thank you for the, thank you for the candies also.
Thank you, Peter.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open public comments. I don't have any slips. So, is there anyone who wants to speak? Okay, Steve?
Mayor Fish, Mayor Potem Chavez, council members, city staff. I've known about the coronavirus since I had dogs in the late 90s. It started in bats and spread to dogs. They used to call it kennel cough. And it can spread pretty rapidly. And that's why dog, the, my vet and a lot of vets would tell people to get your, your dogs a Corona vaccine shot. They had a vaccine and it outgrew itself. And now we've got a real problem because it's spread from bats to dogs to humans. And it's dangerous all the way around because it can spread. And I, I heard the stories at different kennels in Orange County and LA County years ago, like in the late 80s, how this virus just spreads so fast they couldn't control it. And they had actually dogs dying from it. And it's a very scary virus because now it's loose. You know, who knows where it's going to go. And one of the things it does, it affects the respiratory system. It also can affect your ears. And me, it has more, more things it can cause because I've got rheumatoid arthritis. I have a compromised immune system, and it, it can make it worse. I've got that other flu that's going around that gives you the sniffles. Got my, my ears and swelled up my fingers and my knees. Coronavirus is 10 times worse. You don't know what it's going to get into. And I've, I've seen dogs sneezing before that probably had it. And it wasn't as strong then. Now, it's strong. What I would suggest for everybody, including the deputies, is if you know, you're around somebody and you don't know, the best thing you can do is call the fire department if you're not feeling good because that'll be your way of preventing your exposure because then they'll get you up to the hospital and check you out. They'll check everybody out that's around them. They're doing quarantines and a health alert that I haven't seen since, since the 60s when we were dealing with the Hong Kong flu. Been over 50 years since they've done something like this on President-elect. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing anyone else, I'm going to go ahead and close public comments. Moving on to consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended, unless you're in mood for further discussion.
I propose to approve consent calendar.
Second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes. Item eight, public hearing, none. Item nine, unfinished business, none. Item 10, new business, none. Item 11, update from city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Fish, members of the council. Good evening. Couple updates. Clean Power Alliance. We entered into the Clean Power Alliance, a joint powers and authority to essentially buy energy, be an alternate to the energy that's purchased and delivered to customers, both residential and commercial throughout the city. It is the largest community aggregation group in the state of California. I'm happy to report successfully and in fact had the opportunity during the Lunar New Year Festival to talk to the executive director, Ted Bardak, and spent some considerable amount of time with him. Despite some early hiccups related to the charges that Edison were passing on for the stranded cost of customers actually leaving Edison and opting in or staying with the Clean Power Alliance, those issues have started to very much smooth out. We have one of the lower opt-out rates of, we're on average with the tier that we're at with the opt-out rates, the communities that are seeing the largest opt-out rates are the ones that went, remember, there are three tiers, 36%, 50% renewables and 100% renewables. The cities that are seeing the largest opt-out rates are at the 100% level, but even that is starting to level out as well. Financially, the, the alliance is doing very well. As you know, that there were some rate adjustments that actually hit our tier rates for city light, streetlight systems, which coincidentally is playing out interestingly because we've done some conversion of LED streetlights as well. We're still monitoring that. I need to get through a few more billing cycles to understand how that's playing out financially for us. But at least early indications from the first few bills is we're in pretty good shape financially. They are, as part of that joint powers and authority, the authority will be taking on some small-level projects. So, they have to go out and contract out for several years to get renewable energy onto the market and delivered to the customers who are participating, which is almost 98.5% of Temple City accounts, both commercial and residential. There will be some small projects that they'll be taking on over the next few years. But financially, they're doing, they're on some, they're on some firm footing. As you remember, too, the county of Los Angeles lent the authority about $5 million. That payback is on schedule, too. So, between the two things that were a little, a little on the minds of members, the Edison issue and the loan, those things, things to be leveling out. They're starting to get fully staffed. You saw them out here at the Lunar New Year Festival, and they're doing a good job. So, things seem to be doing relatively well on that front.
Yes, yes, sir. Did, did the CPA talk about whether others, new cities have joined the CPA since we started with it? Or was, has that been sort of status quo?
There are a few others, but there is now an opt-in cost for that. That's why we entered at the time, that we entered for, to kind of avoid that opt-in cost. They're looking at, I think, Mayor Fish is, there's about two cities that they're looking at.
There's two.
That may come in, in the next few months to the, a year. But I think they've found kind of a stable tariff firma in terms of where they're at, so, right now, so.
How many cities are part of that?
23, I believe, plus the unincorporated parts of Ventura County, Ventura County and Los Angeles County.
Los Angeles County.
They seem to have trouble conducting meetings.
It is hard to, and I'll let Mayor Fish.
Is that because they can't get a quorum of cities to the meeting?
That's one of their, one of their challenges that they have a lot of member agencies. So, it's tough for them sometimes to, they try different methods.
Yeah, they do have it in Los Angeles, and then they have, I believe, two satellite cities that you can go to. I usually go to, I usually go to Whittier because it's easier for me to go to Whittier than it is for me to go to downtown LA. And also, originally, the meetings were supposed to be at 1 o'clock in the afternoon on, I think it's Thursday.
Thursdays.
And slowly, it's become 2, 2:30, 3 o'clock. So, to be in downtown LA and have it end, yeah, so.
That's it for the report. Any other questions about the Clean Power Alliance? I'll let Councilmember Sternquist and Mayor Fish let you know about their visiting the supervisor. But the county did approve the bid for the refurbishment and expansion of the library and including an additional appropriation of $2.5 million to fully fund the project. Library, temporary library should be opening in the next three weeks at the former Chamber site. And this library, our library here should be closing within the next three weeks as well. So, I don't know if Mayor Fish or Councilmember Sternquist wanted to add anything about their visit to the supervisor's office.
I'll let the mayor share, but I will share that it was $2.4 million that was
Thank you.
needed for the gap, but she threw in an extra $100,000 to make it 2.5. So, I already have plans for that $100,000. But anyway, so that was very, very exciting. But I'll let our mayor share.
And also, it was unanimous by the supervisors. So, it was very exciting. It, it is happening now. I know we've talked about it for months and months, and there's been a lot of changes. And we all know when things take time, they get more and more expensive. And I think we were all a little frightened of that fact because the price tag kept going up and up. But, you know, she said she promised us a library, and she was going to make sure we were going to get a library. And we appreciate it because she did. And she made it happen. And we can't be happier. So, yeah.
What's the timeline now, do we have?
Their timeline, their timeline, well, actually, we're having a meeting with staff at the LA CDC offices next week. So, we should get a revised timeline from them there. But they're thinking 18 months from the time that they mobilize to being open. But we'll get, I'll have a more definitive timeline, which I'll be able to report out as well to the council after next Tuesday.
I believe our, our library is closing mid-February, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's still a little bit in flux. But yeah, they, they, it's in the next two weeks.
Yeah, and then the temporary will open beginning of March. So, it should be very quick.
So, we're going to have a temporary library at the Chamber, but my understanding, they're not going to have books there to check out or anything. Well, I mean, it's such a small building. What possibly could you do there? But maybe return books or online facilities?
You'll be able to order books, you'll be able to get return books, and they'll have some.
Order books from what sense? What do you mean, order a book?
As part of the entire, the entire LA County library system.
So, you order a book and they would ship it there and you'd pick it up?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And return. And programmatically, they're, they still haven't laid out exactly, it's a limited space.
I mean, are they planning on having like computers there where students can go and access?
They were, they were actually in the building today just painting and doing a few things. I S D with the county was out there, so.
Be nice to see when they're done.
Yep.
Madam Mayor, may I just add a comment to the library?
Yes, of course.
You know, when we first partner with, with the county on, on the renovating of the, on the renewing of the Temple City Library, you know, some people might say, "Well, why is it a 50/50 investment?" Because we, essentially, at the time, with both, both the city and the county, we're supposed to put in $1.95 million. So, we've been, that number hasn't changed for the city. I want people to know that. But the county has actually since the pitch in a lot more. I think we're actually less than a third of the cost of the total project. So, so, kind of like what you have articulated, Mayor and the councilmember Sternquist. You know, I think the county's, you know, been, you know, treating us pretty well in, you know, moving the project forward. So, we should be very grateful for that.
I agree.
Thank you to both of you for kind of.
And we, we did tell her that we were very thankful.
Yeah.
Very excited. So, it was nice to get that base.
Yeah.
And thank you for going to the supervisor's meeting to, to thank her personally. I thought that was, that was great that you guys took the time out to do that.
Thank you.
Afraid I couldn't.
Will there be a dedication or?
Your work. Yeah, still, still a little bit of flux, but it looks like it's going to be the Monday after the Camellia Festival. I'll have that nailed down, well, we should have that nailed down by tomorrow.
Monday after, it'll be, what day is that?
The 20th, maybe. Yeah.
It's like the 24th.
22nd. Sorry, I'll, I'll find a date.
Oh, that's great. That's great because I couldn't make the 19th, so.
The 24th, excuse me.
24th.
Yes. But we're, I'm going to, we're working with the Field Deputy, Santa Maravella, and we'll, 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 once that's all affirmed on the supervisor's side, we'll make sure you guys all know.
And you post on the city website, I hope, so folks can come and.
Yep.
Celebrate.
Will do. Lastly, just two more quick things. Bike Expo and Ride this coming Saturday. Registration starts at 7:30, followed through with a small giveaway, active S G V. Bike Group will be providing some giveaways. Temple City Bike Shop has a giveaway as well. So, please be there.
And Community Bike Ride.
And Community Bike Ride. Lastly, too, Primrose Park. We've been getting, had some communications back with the state. I'll be coming back to the Standing Committee of Councilmembers Yu and Man next Friday with some ideas. Just have some alternatives ready with a base bid and some other things as well, so we can start that process. If we get the full grant, and if we don't, have some options to come back to the council to discuss as looking at more like from a phasing standpoint, having a base bid and some potential phasing, just in case that funding doesn't pull together. But we'll have that all ready as well, so we'll have that meeting next Friday. And that's enough for me tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Update from city attorney.
Thank you. On your consent agenda, you did adopt or approve a letter opposing Senate Bill 50. As most of the people here know, most people here tonight watching on TV know, Senate Bill 50 was defeated last week. Still important to take that position because it does set forth the city's position on state housing laws in general. We certainly expect more housing laws to come down. It's our hope that with the defeat of Senate Bill 50, they will be more understanding of suburban residential communities like Temple City. We'll take into account your needs to a much greater extent than Senate Bill 50 did. But obviously, we'll be keeping an eye on those and bringing them back to you as the spring goes along. Thank you.
Thank you. Council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings.
Yes, Mayor Fish, while I could be part of the reporting.
Go ahead.
Fill in whatever I missed. Yeah, so I'd like to report out on the school district and the city's standing committee that Mayor Fish and I are a part of. We met this past Friday, January 31st, at the school district boardroom. And so it was a very productive meeting. We went over a lot of topics. We got an update from the school district about how the coronavirus has affected student attendance. They said comparatively to other school districts, they have not really seen a decline in students in attendance, whereas some adjoining school districts have seen, I believe Dr. Fricker mentioned, 10% decline in student attendance.
So these are students that are not attending because they're afraid of the virus? Not that they are sick or anything, right?
That's correct, yes. At least that's sort of the conjecture, I think.
But how do they know that they're staying home because of that?
Because they are asking...
They ask why you stayed home? They said because of the coronavirus?
They're being very specific.
Really?
And they're there because they want to know what procedures the school district is taking.
Is that an excused absence?
Well, you know what?
The school district is requiring that students have to provide a doctor's note if they're going to be home.
And then they did say that they are telling the parents that they're, they can keep their children home, but not for an extended amount of time because they do have to be in school. So they'd have to make some kind of arrangements to be their homeschooled or something. If that's, I mean, that's their privilege, but again, they can't just do it because they're frightened.
And we went over briefly sort of the educational outreach efforts that need to kind of go out. Like we mentioned, our community is a large portion Asian-American, and for some of these immigrant, first-generation immigrant families, they may have lived through the Hong Kong SARS scare in the early 2000s. And so there's a bit of a cultural aspect to this fear of the coronavirus that is reflected in the way some of the community is reacting. So we're very happy to hear that the school district was very much on top of it and actively outreach to parents as well as students, circulating the information that, you know, we've been getting from the CDC as well as our L.A. County Public Health Lead Director. So that was good info. The school also shared with us that they are planning an emergency training on March 16th. And so it was good to know. We're trying to see how we on the city can interface with that and also how to spread the message so that residents aren't alarmed by a large activities going on on that day. So on our end, we've, we're looking to help them spread that news through our channels, whether it's social media, whether it's robocalls. I know Mr. Cook is going to work with Dr. Fricker on what's the best way for us to coordinate efforts on that emergency training.
And I understand, my understanding is that the sheriff will not be involved with that? This is a private company that's doing this?
My understanding is they hired a consultant. They did mention that they were going to interface with the sheriff, but it's unclear at this point exactly how that's going to work. So I think they're reaching out to them.
Councilmember Man, would you please explain what they meant by emergency training? What kind of emergency are we talking about here?
I think they're specifically saying active shooter training.
At the high school.
At the high school.
Kind of surprising that the Sheriff's Department's...
Yeah, they're the ones who are going to respond.
Right, they are the one that has, you know...
I don't understand that at all.
Everybody's running out and they're running in, right?
Well, they hired a private company that does this. But they did say that they are in contact with the Sheriff's Department. We, of course, told them to reach out to us because we will have to be providing, not necessarily street closures, but just maybe some traffic. And again, their biggest concern was to make sure that the neighbors of the high school know what's going on so that they know that it's a training. Because it is a day where there's no students that day, so with all the activities, you know.
Brian, could you, when you speak with them soon, because it's March 16th, you said? I mean, that's not that far away, and see what plans they have with our Sheriff's Department?
Yes. We, after that meeting, we talked, and Mr. Azumi and I and the sheriff's team will talk and see what we can do in support of, one, educating the community so there's no panic in the community if there's anything that comes out, and then what we'll be doing, yes.
My concern would be that whatever this private company is instructing them on is consistent with whatever the sheriff's response would be. They have to be consistent because this private company is not going to be responding to such an emergency, but rather will be our local fire and sheriff. So it makes not much sense to me that they would not be an integral part of that training, but maybe they know something I don't know.
Except we did, you know, try to stress that we wanted to make sure that our residents and our Sheriff's Department knew what was going on. But again, it's up to the school district if they want to hire someone else.
Yeah, so I think Brian, Mr. Cook will handle the details and share with us, the council, and as well as with the rest of the community when more details are available. We did also get an update regarding the, we've been making strides towards looking at a joint use agreement for facilities with the school district. So they did report back to us saying that they're starting a fee study update that will conclude early spring, March, April. And they mentioned that, I guess, there's new laws and regulation that had imposed a fourth category of fees that wasn't considered in the original fee study. So they're looking at doing things that gives them a little bit more of an angle to get back to the joint use facility agreement. So that, from a timing standpoint, we did ask them, when would that kick in? So it seems like if everything goes as they're planning, we would have enough information for council to deliberate on the budget by the time we get to our budget discussion. So, of course, we'll have more information brought back at the next meeting. We've already planned our next meeting to be in March, so hopefully we'll have more updates then. And just the last thing I want to touch on is we did talk to them about the students from Hualien, Taiwan, who will be visiting us during the weekend of the Camellia Festival. And the school district has been gracious in hosting a tour as well as a meeting for the students and the delegation. Or I believe it's on the Friday?
It's on Friday.
It's the Friday, right before the Camellia Festival. They're excited because as council and the audience who has been following this knew, when Mayor Fish and I recently went to Taiwan, part of the motivation for that was inspired by the Australian Sister Cities Association with the hopes of maybe launching a similar program. And what we brought back was perhaps the more appropriate, or there might be more success and more potential in the school district doing something with them because it seems like they're more interested in long-term programs. So Board Member Giorgino had expressed some interest in engaging that. So what better time than when they're physically present to do so? So we went over that, and we're working with the school district to form more, I don't want to call it an agenda, but something more concrete to see exactly what's going to be discussed.
Thank you.
Not sure what else is there.
I think you've covered just about everything.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask, what are some of the upcoming topics that, for future agendas?
Well, we are definitely keeping the fee schedule. We will be able to, once we get their fee study, we'll be able to see what partnerships we want to do with the school district. Also, our Parks and Recreation Department is, they are kind of doing a schedule of our needs so that we can know what we need from the school district, and they're doing what they need from the city. We'd like to partner a little bit more than we have in the previous two years, and we think we can. I just want to say I'm very, very happy that we have this communication and we are meeting on a regular basis. We always set a meeting at our meeting to make sure that we can all make it, and we've had everyone show up and be very enthusiastic. But if you, if there's anything that you would like to think of...
Well, I'm just wanting to keep the parking for situation, possibly moving the employee parking that's, where am I? This side, over to the park that's not used. And we had talked about exploring that some time ago when Kathy Carini was here, and maybe opening that parking lot up to aid the library might be something that maybe they'd be willing to do. In exchange, as an M.O.U., maybe they get to use Oak, or not Oak, but the community center, and we get to park there. Something creative that possibly might open up this parking lot for residents.
Okay. Brian, can we make a note of that?
Who are the members of their standing committee?
It's Board President Donna Giorgino and Board Member Matt Smith.
They have an election coming up in November. Do you know?
Do we know, Jerry?
Do we know? Yes.
They do.
Is that three seats or two seats? I'm just curious.
Thank you.
Five seats.
Were there any other reports from Eli and her? Okay, good. Council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Councilmember Sternquist?
Just speaking with Brian Cook about my role on Foothill Transit. Brian had asked me in discussions to possibly explore something similar that Dwardy has with Foothill Transit, where they do a micro-transit service. And Foothill Transit provides their fixed route, and they have two of the new electric bus, Foothill Transit buses in the city of Dwardy.
They just operate in the city boundaries?
Yes, just in the city boundary. So possibly looking at something that might be feasible for our city and Mayor Fish is a member of our governing board also. So it's nice to be able to have that input from her cluster that she represents, which are the cities closest to us, Dwardy, Monrovia, Rosemead, who's the other?
Is Pasadena part of that?
Pasadena.
Yes, Pasadena.
Because they have a local bus.
They do. They have a pretty...
Pretty vibrant bus.
Pasadena, Dwardy, myself.
So we'll be having some discussions about how possibly maybe even, you know, the Dial-A-Ride service. I think, I'm not quite sure, but did Dwardy eliminate their Dial-A-Ride? Or is this an additional, Brian? Do you know?
I don't think it's...
I believe it's additional because you still have to deal with the ADA accommodations related to the Dial-Ride service and that funding that's associated with it.
Okay, so this would be then open to the general public, not just like ADA requirements. So we'll definitely explore that and bring back some information as to how that could possibly operate in the city. And you mentioned the funding. What are the, is it Measure R?
Prop A funds, which we have an excess amount of because we don't have enough programming per se to meet, and you can't use Prop A funds for roadway projects like we can with Prop C funding as well. So there's some excess funds on a yearly basis that are there. That could be, that could be a possibility for the council to explore.
Okay, thank you. That's it?
Thank you. Councilwoman Yu?
I think, Madam Mayor, just wanted to take this opportunity to wish everybody a Happy Lunar New Year. We have had a Lunar New Year celebration just last Saturday. It was a success, and in spite of perhaps all the people maybe canceling the events, but we kept ours, and it was a great, great success, a great day, a great warm day. So I want to thank city staff and city manager and his staff for putting it together, and also want to thank the Chinese, the Temple City Chinese Association as well.
They did a great job. Thank you. Councilmember Man?
Thank you, Mayor Fish. Yeah, I just want to echo that, yeah, despite the coronavirus, I was glad we had a, we had a good turnout. And I also want to just extend appreciation to Senator Susan Rubio and Assemblymember Ed Chow for joining us for the opening ceremonies. It's very classy of them to kind of support us all the time throughout all of our events, so great appreciation for that. And yeah, and thank you to our Parks and Rec Department, working with the Temple City Chinese American Association. They put a lot of effort into the planning. They're a small crew. So for them to be able to put something together like that, it's always grateful to have them. And yeah, looking forward to next up is the big one, the Camellia Festival. Yes, thank you.
Big one.
Thank you. Mayor Potem?
Well, you know, I wasn't going to say anything, but I felt that you guys already mentioned the Lunar New Year. I felt, I get some feedback that, why isn't Mayor Potem Chavez here at this event? And I just want everybody to know that I had had previous personal matter to take care of. Not that I did not want to be at that event, and certainly I supported it fully. I just want everybody to know, I know my colleagues up here know that. But sometimes, you know, our personal lives take us in other directions. But I heard that those who did attend had a great time, and I'm look forward to future events, so. I will be there, or at least try to be. Thank you all for coming, for going.
Great, great. Well, I, again, wanted to say thank you for a very successful Lunar New Year. We've thanked a lot of people, and I would like to thank especially Lucy Liu, who had to put up with translating for us, which was not always easy because we like to talk and we would forget she was translating. So, you know, she's just such a bright star in our community. She does so much. And she was running around putting out fires, so Lucy, if you're listening, I just want to say thank you.
But she's not here.
I know, she's not here. Hopefully, she's at home resting. Also, again, I'm not sure all of you know, but Councilmember Sternquist was named president of Foothill Transit at our last meeting, so I'd like to congratulate you.
Thank you. It's fun.
Thank you. I know you've been on the board for many years, so it's very well deserved.
Thank you.
And it makes me very proud to know that you're representing Temple City as our president, so that's nice.
Does that mean you could drive the bus anytime?
No, but we will have the mini Foothill Transit bus in the parade.
The parade.
So if any of you want to ride in it, I know the president.
Will you be riding in it?
No, no, I choose not to.
Are you still the president of St. Gabriel Valley Cog?
I am until, till May.
Wow.
So...
She's busy. Busy.
Yeah.
She's busy.
Keeps me out of trouble.
Keeps you out of trouble.
President time two.
The funny thing about that is, is that both cog and Foothill Transit meet in the same Foothill Transit office building now. And most of the...
That's the one on Huntington?
No, on Vincent and West Covina.
Oh.
And many of the elected officials that serve on both groups tend to sit in the exact same spots. So when I had my first meeting and I looked up, I'm thinking, oh my goodness, what meeting is this? Because the other one was the day before. So I'm like, okay, don't say cog because this is Foothill Transit. But it's just so funny that they want to sit in the exact same spot at both meetings, if they're on both organizations, so I have to keep focused.
It's a beautiful meeting room.
But it is really nice that they're both in one place.
That's nice. Well, congratulations again.
Thank you, thank you.
And then, of course, I want to remind everybody about our bike event this Saturday, starting at 7:30. Registration, so the event will be from 8:00 to 11:00 at Lyman Park, so come down. That'd be great. And that's all I have. Like to open up additional public comments? Okay, both of you? Jerry, you can start.
Good evening, Mayor Fish and council members. I thoroughly enjoyed the Lunar New Year celebration. I thought it was one of the best. It wasn't mostly widely attended, but those that were there, I think, had a good time and enjoyed the food. I was kidding Lucy Liu that she probably gets zero for interpreting, but I said they're going to probably lower your pay even more because you guys didn't give her a chance to interpret a lot of the time, so it was, it was good, yeah. Councilwoman Man, Congresswoman Judy Chu was there also. She came at 2:45.
Oh, did she?
I didn't know. I wasn't there at that time, so I didn't see her.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Thank you for letting us know.
Yeah, she presented the proclamation to Adam Natsumoto and I think Kenny Lou.
Thank you.
On January 22nd, at the school board meeting, Dr. Josh Porter was outlining the March 16th event. And he did mention at that time that he was going to invite city staff to participate and also the Sheriff's Department. So just take that for what it's worth, but I videoed it, took pictures, so that's what he said.
So what you're saying is we have hard evidence of that?
We have hard evidence.
Yes. I spoke it as an attorney.
They did say they were going to include us. We just don't know to what extent.
Yes, yeah. And in my last comment, I guess, on the library, for the $2.4 million, just help me understand, is it because of increased construction costs? Or are we getting something more than what we originally outlined a couple of years ago, or what's happening?
Well, it's actually four point, what is it, four point?
No, the addition, she's asking about the additional.
The additional $2.4.
Did you want to, did you want to?
My belief is, from what I understand, is that just the cost of labor and product has gone up substantially since the time that it was first estimated what the cost would be for the library.
I see.
But maybe... We're not getting anything additional.
Since Councilmember Yu deals with these type of things, he...
Yeah, I think it was a... Yeah, I think it was probably a combination of different factors. And I think it perhaps it was an over optimistic estimate of the construction cost. So, but that's actually to the city's advantage because we agreed to be sharing the cost. So we actually agreed to a lower number. And then, but yet, there has been huge escalation in the market. And not only the huge escalation because there's so much work, it's hard to get people to bid on projects these days. So I was really glad that the county was willing to step in and fulfill their obligation making it happen. So, but, but I know it's not like we all of a sudden changed our mind and wanted more things. It was just still the same design. It was just the market's really gone a whack, yeah.
So just to echo what you said previously a few minutes ago, is that it was kind of really a smart thing for the city to pay the 1.9 million over two years ago to kind of ensure and get our foot in the door. And we don't have to have any increased costs, correct?
Yeah, absolutely correct. I mean, there were projects that I'm handling that we got delayed for a reason. And now it's like 30, 50% higher than we are original estimates.
Wow.
So it was perhaps by luck, not so much by experience, that we, the city acted on it two years ago, but it was a good decision in hindsight.
Okay, thank you very much.
It just shows how important those relationships are. That when we invite the county supervisor out, when she came for breakfast, that we were all there and the community came out. So she gets to know our city and she is a neighbor. I believe she lives in San Marino or close by. So those, just going and attending events that she's at or inviting her to our city just really makes a difference. I think it's, when you build those relationships, it's a little bit harder to say no.
Yes.
So.
But I also think that it's important, not just the council reaching out and the city manager reaching out to our board supervisor. I think that's why I wanted the dedication to be on our city website. I think all the residents should take the, take time to thank Supervisor Barker for her generosity and willing to step up to the plate and fill in that gap. It's $2.4 million is a lot of money even for the county.
Yes, yeah. And just to piggyback on that a little bit, I thought it was very nice of you at the Lunar New Year celebration to pay tribute to Senator Susan Rubio for her kind work for Temple City too. But getting back to Supervisor Barker, I hope I'm not saying something out of school, but she also is a $2,500 sponsor for our Camellia Festival. So that's amazing, so it's good.
That is great.
So thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Hello. Good evening, mayor and city council. I wasn't planning to talk, but since you have some question. So first I want to thank the city for the support. Lotte love put the money in and also gave us a temporary home. That's a big relief. And we have a date. The library open to the public will be February 12th. And then February 13, we have all staff training, so the, all the county library will be closed. So the temp site will open February 14th. So it's back to back. So we have the banner up. One is at the parking lot. Another one is on the exterior wall facing Golden West. So I heard our headquarters is work on a sign for the front door. But again, everything has to come from the headquarters, so we're waiting. And then also, our website has a notice as well. Says the library will be closed on the 12th. The temp site will open on 14th. And while we open on the 14th, and we also have going staff as older side studying packing stuff. And the plan is we're going to have, you know, the order staff from a different library. So they were able to pick up their holds as a temporary location. And they are going to have computer lots, 10 of them, but we'll have at least four of them. Actually, total five, two for adults, two for kids, and one for the kindergarteners. And we will have limited books, not going to be our whole collection, but we're periodically updating, updating, you know, because people keep returning. We're still going to receive new books, so we're going to updating the books. And what else? So we will have the staff. Every morning will be, will be empty the book drop at the old location. So the book drop from the time being, we're going to keep it access to rent it. So everybody still can put a book over there. Every morning, we just have, going to have a staff come here to retrieve a book, to take to those in the library to processing. Because again, the temp site is too small, so there's no place for us to process the books.
So they still have a book drop, a new temporary library, right?
No, yes, they're going to also have a book drop at temporary location as well. So we'll have book drop here and book drop as a temporary site.
Great.
So, yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
Yeah, are you going to be operating the temporary site?
Yes, at this moment, because again, we're super short of staff and we're allowed, we actually done half of the staff and because we're going to close the lot, have any plan to fill this position. So for this time be, again, we don't know how busy the temp site will be. So at least at the beginning, I will be at the temp site. Especially we open at the same hour, we need the people to cover the morning, cover the afternoon. So for the time being, I'm here.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other public comments?
Could I ask one more?
Yes, sure.
I forgot to ask, will there be a groundbreaking for the construction at the old library?
Yes.
Yes, that's the date we're.
That's the one, that's going to be the day after the Camellia Festival.
Okay.
On Monday.
But we'll, we'll.
But it's still the new works.
We'll make that official and get that on the website.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. No more public comments? Okay, thank you for, everyone for coming. We are adjourned.
No. Yes, the mayor's right. The regular meeting is adjourned and we will now restart the special meeting and go back into closed session on item A. Thank you very much.